Good evening. Welcome to our regular Board of Education meeting. Today is Monday, February 12th, 2024 already. Please stand and join us in the presence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the mission, the mission of, wait, wait. The mission of the White Plains School is to educate and inspire our students while nurturing their dreams so they think continually and critically and pursue their aspirations in a dynamic and diverse world. Yes? Oh, by the board, us, okay. All right, so I'll start. I know we have a packed house and a kind of long agenda, so if we could start, you came with some brief announcements.
I'll just, I'll keep it brief. I was going to attend Fiddler on the Roof this past weekend, but I was asked by a few students that I teach in a neighboring district if they could use my tickets to go attend because they had read the article. That was in Low-Hud, talking about Fiddler on the Roof. So I had some tickets waiting for them at Wheel Call, and they loved the show, and they came back to our school, and they wanted to write it up in our high school newspaper. Just the experience of visiting White Plains and seeing Fiddler on the Roof. So I thought that was great.
That's interesting.
Yeah, and many of us attended the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association's Legislative Forum, where we had an opportunity to speak to a few of our legislators, like Shelley Mayer was there, Amy Pollan. It was all board members, and we all got to express and ask questions about the foundation aid, things like fair and the harmless, just getting money to the districts from the state. Many districts, unlike White Plains, had lost millions of dollars, so we're just trying to make all the districts secure and full at that point. But it was a good opportunity to speak to them. They are right in line with us advocating for what we need, and many of the other districts are in the same boat. And I think that is all I did.
I actually did see Fiddler on the Roof, as did Cheryl. It was a wonderful performance again. It's just, it's wonderful to see the kids onstage and see the tech people and everyone, and it was just, it was a great experience. And then on January 24th, I'm on the district's advisory, Guidance Advisory Committee. So we had a Zoom meeting, and in there we explored the development of, there's now guidance, a guidance counselor for the elementary schools and the development of that, helping kids with mindfulness, learning about peaceful resolutions. That's, that's a wonderful thing, I think, that the kids don't need. I think we need it, but that's besides the point. Middle school, talk to, again, mindfulness, restorative circles, and just, again, helping kids find their way, find out who they are, live a more peaceful life. I think that's, that's really important. And then on the high school level, talking about college search programs and, and the new seminar program, and just a lot of exciting things going on across the guidance spectrum. Made me feel really good about where we're heading.
Thank you, thank you for that. And briefly, I believe we also had something else from West Putt on, on relations, on superintendent board communications. So that was a very, you know, that was a very engaging webinar. And, and the thing is, you know, what we found out is that we do a lot of the right things here in White Plains. And really, we're on the leading edge in terms of what we do, in terms of communication. So we were able to share some of the things that we do, and it was just good to hear that, that we're leading. People want to emulate how we communicate. So thank you, thank you, thank you there. I will say, many of us went to Church Street for Family Reading Night. It was awesome. You know, to see the children in their pajamas and just reading to them. I almost wanted to have one of my PJs.
And packed, I mean, really packed.
Yeah, yeah, there were a lot of kids and parents, and really, it's a nice, I think it's a respite. It's a nice wind down to bed and to see kids excited about reading and engaging and answering questions. So I would speak on behalf of the board and just say we are very thankful to have been invited to that. Anything briefly?
I'll talk fast. Okay, and I won't repeat. I went to Highlands Curriculum Night to go over curriculum for 7th and 8th grade, well-attended, especially by 6th grade Eastview parents. Keen and Bean were very appreciative that they have been doing a series of workshops and webinars, and so they did one on tenure. That was very interesting. Let's see, Eastview had an international dinner and really great performances and wonderful food. Emery Davis did a presentation on the seal of civic readiness on Zoom, which was also really, really well done, really very clear. And it's exciting how many kids should be able to participate in receiving that seal upon graduation. The White Plains Library had a tailgate fundraiser, so I did attend that. And it's, again, really, you know, valuable that we have such a great relationship, school district, with the, with the library and other, you know, things in White Plains. New York State School Boards Association had a, what they call a virtual Capitol Conference. And so that was a full morning of hearing from the State Education Department, an executive budget review, so the governor's budget, legislative panel, and then a discussion with the governor's personnel as well. Purchase College is offering, for the first time, scholarships for two first-generation college students for housing, which is really exciting. And so the president of Purchase College and some other administrators came and spoke to our students and unveiled that new scholarship, which is, you know, really generous and really wonderful. And they made the point that, you know, even if students are attending college locally, that being on campus and living on campus can make a, can make a real difference. PTA Council sponsored a speaker who met with all the high school students. I'm told it was really well-received. And then they did a parent program as well that I attended. Why Character Matters. And the speaker spoke about anti-bullying, standing up, you know, for what's right, social media. So that was really well done. And the last things I want to mention is that I had the opportunity to go down to Washington, D.C. The National School Boards Association had both an equity symposium and an advocacy institute. And, you know, there were motivational speakers. There were workshops on all sorts of things related to education and equity and advocacy. And then we also went up to the Hill to advocate with Senator Schumer's staff, and I also met with Mike Lawler, and to advocate on behalf of funding for IDEA, Title I funding, Title II funding, universal, you know, free lunch. So that was a really wonderful opportunity also to represent, you know, school boards.
Okay, I think, Valerie, we've covered, because we've covered you kind of, because you, I know you enjoyed the, the reading night as well. And we would be remiss, Dr. Ricker was also a featured reader. We were the readers in the classroom. There were some readers that got to read in auditorium under the spotlight. Not us, but Dr. Ricker and the mayor. The mayor attended, and they were, they were featured readers. So if everything...
Reading in the dark.
Yeah, so I think we're all good here. So next, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Eller. Good evening, everybody. It is good to see everybody here. I hope you all stay for all of the presentations.
Come!
It really is, it's great to see everybody. And it's hard to believe that we are already middle of February. Lots to celebrate in February. Black History Month kicked off, and so much happening all throughout the school district. Of course, Lunar New Year just took place over the weekend. Again, celebrations and educational opportunities throughout the school district. And of course, Valentine's Day on Wednesday. And PTA Council did shift this month's meeting, so it won't be on Valentine's Day, it'll be on Thursday, which I think was, it was a good idea. I do, I do want to welcome and thank Frida for being here with us this evening, and I want to turn the microphone over to you for, for this month's update. Yeah, sure, that's great.
Hello, everyone. I wasn't here last month, so Happy New Year. I'm going to be starting off with Eastview tonight. They had a full month of activities. There was a great turnout for their International Night, January 24th, where their cultural and culinary displays from all over the world. It served as a display for understanding and embracing multiculturalism. They also had their mid-year Student Path of Success team presentations, where they reviewed the norms of their school. To the end of the month, they had a spirit week and an ice cream party, and of course, a Valentine's Day luncheon tomorrow, or I guess Wednesday, considering the snow. MAS also had a busy start to the year. They began their indoor recess offerings for anyone interested in chess, zumba, or even community service with the help of parent volunteers. Students also paired up with Soul Riders to create encouraging letters and bracelets for local cancer patients. The buddy classes worked together to celebrate the life of Dr. Martin Luther King, and there's an exciting crossover with White Plains High School mariachi band when they showed up for Papa Performance, as well as salsa and Irish step dancing. For Post Road, the Family, the Family Science Festival started, followed by a STEM fair. There was also a family reading night held by Mrs. Osorio and Mr. Dino, of course. Here, Bilingual's Bedtime Story was read to families who came dressed up in pajamas as a way to kick off Parents as Reading Partners Week. And we can't forget Valentine's Day. They had a Sweetheart Dance where children came dressed up with their guardians. Finally, White Plains Athletics. The girls' basketball team has been crushing it and setting new records lately, which is very exciting. This part is not athletic, however. I was asked by many students to give a shout-out to the White Plains High School for the production, considering how hard everyone worked. Delia is not here, however. Dr. Ricker, I think she will send her notes to you. So that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And before, before we move into the agenda, so President Eller, we're just, President Eller and I were just talking, and we are going to switch up the agenda a little bit this evening. We will do the agenda portion first, and then we'll come back to the presentations. For all of you who can't stay for the whole meeting, I was only kidding before, I wouldn't make the stay for the whole meeting. But before we, before we do that, I do have just a couple of quick announcements as well. Winter weather, of course, tomorrow, we're expecting some winter weather. The school district is going to be, it's odd to be at a board meeting announcing this, but it's going to be closed tomorrow, so better snow. Yes, it does feel like snow. And every, we watched every single, you know, model and tried to, to look for all the potential holes, but it looks like it's going to snow. So be careful tomorrow in the weather as well, they're predicting heavy snow, especially for shoveling. We celebrated the 100th day of school. Hard to believe, but the kids had a blast. Again, I also want to echo and congratulate not only our actors at the high school, but also our musicians who are getting ready for concerts. And I know tomorrow, we're going to have to reschedule one. Our athletes, many, many, many great titles and achievements in the winter months. And we have league champs. We're in sectionals right now for a number of our teams, and so we're really excited about the progress that our Tigers have been making. And so congratulations to everybody. Also, I would like to thank the PTA Council, it was a great assembly. And I have the opportunity, I think, next week, going to be connecting with Mark and talking with him a little bit. Yeah, about, about ways that we can assist parents and guardians, all of us, in navigating social media and how our children interact with it. Midwinter recess is coming up, not to be, not that I think I needed to remind you, but, and we hope that you enjoy that again. Also, on this evening's agenda is the 2024-2025 Academic Year Calendar. So following Board Review, we'll be able to post that for everybody. And we have a number of retirements this evening that the Board is going to consider, as well as new appointments and also tenure of our colleagues that we'll be celebrating as well. And of course, retirements and tenure, we also celebrate at the, at the end of the year as well. So we'll come back again and celebrate our colleagues also.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
So, as Dr. Ricker said, we're going to move to our summary action items. We have summary action items four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
I'd like to draw your attention to item D, the donations. And we are grateful for the following donations. $5,100 from the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools to cover four grants. $600 to grant, to fund Wellness Week Yoga for all students at Rochambeau. $700 grant to fund the Animal Adaptions Program for the 4th grade dual-language students at Post Road. $800 grant to fund student admissions for all 4th graders at Post Road School to Phillipsburg Manor. $3,000 grant to fund two assemblies for all students at MAS. Prismatic Magic Laser and Story Phases. I don't have to come to that, Mr. Jackson, that's exciting. And the following donations were made for the Philip Barnett Memorial Scholarship Fund. $50 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Stanley Kerpel. $100 donation from Mr. and Mrs. John Stankounis. $100 donation from Ms. Reema Reynes. $100 donation from Mr. Gerald Kramer. $108 donation from Ms. Antonia Martinez. And a $200 donation from Mr. and Mrs. Gregory Matthews. And Stop &amp; Shop donated the following items for the George Washington, for George Washington School's Pancake Breakfast: a case of pancake mix, six bottles of syrup, one large can of coffee, plates, napkins, and cups. We also had a $6,000 donation for the E. Glenn Creative Writing Scholarship for Mrs. Ernestine Glenn, and a $50 donation for the Richard Leepson Journalism Scholarship for Mr. Ronald DeChico. Thank you very much for all of your generous donations.
Thank you. We're certainly very fortunate. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we're going to move to our individual action items. Our first one, we have the recommended approval of a settlement agreement with an employee. May I have a motion?
Second.
And the details, the indicative content is there. Any questions? Okay? No, Rose?
Who are you talking to?
I thought you had a question.
No.
No, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
These are, you know, it's a confidential matter, so hence, we don't have any names or anything. Next, we have the recommended, the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Monica...
Ariz Mendez.
Ariz Mendez, who is replacing Kathy Barpulis. May I have a motion? And she'll be replacing her as the coordinator of STEM pre-K through 6. May I have a motion? Do we have, wait, wait, not yet.
I liked it, I liked it.
I like to tap on the back. It's too early, it's too early.
And Kathy's not leaving.
No, no, Kathy's not leaving. Right, she has a new position. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Now. And Monica, please stand and just say hi. And just if you could bring us some, some words. I'm sorry I didn't get the opportunity to meet you, but I'll, I'll catch up with you.
So once again, my name is Monica Ariz Mendez. I'm so honored to be newly appointed as the coordinator of STEM pre-K to 6 as a White Plains alum.
Oh, yes, yes, sorry, I'm sorry, John. John, it's going to be July.
We'll do that again. So, good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Monica Ariz Mendez, and I'm truly honored to be newly appointed as the coordinator of STEM pre-K to 6. As a very proud White Plains alum, I went to Ridgeway Elementary, Eastview Middle, and White Plains High School. This really is a huge, huge honor. And so I would like to take the opportunity to thank the interview committee, the cabinet, as well as the Board for entrusting me with this responsibility, to Dr. Barpulis for all of her support over the last seven years within STEM enrichment. And so I'm looking forward to continue on in this journey and serving our community. So thank you again.
Congratulations to Ariz Mendez. And through a very rigorous interview process with, with committee work, I'd like to thank Mr. Pepper, all the stakeholders who worked in the committees. Thank you, everybody. Also, just tremendous, fantastic energy and a desire and a commitment to support our children. And I am so thrilled for you and look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
And I promise, John, I won't forget. I'll keep you in my eyesight. Next, we have the, the recommended approval of an overnight trip for student activities at White Plains High School. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
And I'm told this is for seed.
You're talking about, yes.
Yes, that's for seed.
Right, the Theconic Outdoor Center located in Cold Spring.
Charlie's just...
I'm going to have to recuse myself because I'm supposed to go on this trip. I have a lot of things to be weird about.
So it's, and just so that everyone, just to be even more transparent, it's a student activities trip at White Plains High School. And they're going to go visit the Theconic Outdoor Center located in Cold Spring, New York.
Yeah, and they do team building and with, with our seed group. It's a very extensive process.
You have any question, any more question, comments? All in favor? Aye. And one abstention. Next, we have the recommended approval of an overnight field trip for White Plains High School 12th grade science research students. And this is an overnight trip for the research science students to attend SUNY Albany Junior Science and Humanities Symposium Competition in Albany. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Do we have any, any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have an appointment. We have the recommended approval of the provisional appointment of Noah Miller as the Chief Information Officer District Y effective March 1st, 2024. Yeah, effective March 1st, 2024. And Mr. Miller replaces Ron Villas. May I have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Jesus, I don't like Russians.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll do second, second.
Second. Are there any questions?
No, just to both appointments tonight. We had great conversations during the interviews when they come to the Board, both Monica and you. We just thoroughly enjoyed the evening.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Mr. Miller, would you?
That's good, when you're done talking to him, so.
Okay. Okay. So, did I do something wrong? Sorry. So, Mr. Miller, would you like to step up to the microphone and bring a couple of brief comments?
Well, that was a lot more succinct than I probably will be. But I just want to say, it's really an honor to have been chosen for this position. I did get a chance to work in White Plains as a, as an employee of Southern Westchester Bosse's for a few years, and it was really one of the best experiences of my life. I got a chance to move on to another position at Bosse's where I really, I got a chance to, to, to experience leadership skills in a bigger scale. But it was at the expense of being maybe one step removed from interaction with students and teachers, which I very much miss. And so it's really going to be an honor to, to work with all of the fabulous educators and all the students here. Really looking forward to it, so thank you.
Who says you can't come home again, Mr. Miller? Congratulations, again, another rigorous process, and we are really looking forward to, to, to working with you and welcoming you back to the, to the community.
I already have some questions.
Next, I have to go back to this one. I unintentionally skipped it. We have the recommended approval of the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Paul Bratcher, Director of Rochambeau, effective the close of business on June 30th, 2024, and Brent Brown, Assistant Principal at the Middle School Highlands, effective July 15th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Charlie, you want to start, and I'll follow?
Yeah, I'd like to thank both of them. I got to know both of them very well, and particularly Paul Bratcher. Just want to thank you all for that, what they delivered to our students, to our community, and good luck in your next journey.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's always good when, when, you know, people get to do what they enjoy and then begin the next new wonderful phase of life. So we wish them all the best. So next, we have tenure appointments. We have the recommended approval of the administrative appointment to tenure of the following. Rob Janowitz from Lomarinnick Avenue Elementary School, Elementary School Principal. We have Rocco Verulo, Coordinator of Instructional Technology, Business Education, and Library Media Services, K through 12 District Y, effective March 25th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. I don't know if you have a one-second brief message, but you have to stand up here. Okay, all right, Dan. All right, it has to be, it has to be, and you have to stand up here. One sentence, one second, one sentence. Let's see. Yeah, I think Rocco's here.
So, I don't know what I'm more nervous about, talking in front of my wife or the everybody else. I just want to thank everyone. And I started my career as administrator in White Plains, and I'm excited to say I'm going to end my career in White Plains eventually. This has been my home. And receiving tenure twice in White Plains has been nothing but gratifying, humbling. Thank you to the Board. The Cabinet has been incredibly supportive. Thank you to our family, colleagues. I share this tenure with all of you. Because, because of you, I'm here. So thank you, everyone. Two seconds. Thank you, everybody.
Is Rocco, Rocco is...
Dr. Veru, give your second.
Yeah. One, one, one second.
First of all, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. There's a little story that I arrived on the 26th of March, right the day before that pandemic hit. And I actually entered this building, and somebody said to me, "What are you doing here?" So I said, "No, I'm here to stop my job." "Are you joking?" "No, I'm here to stop my job." And then I got a call from the superintendent, which was the highlight of the evening. He called me up personally to tell me, "You belong here. You know, we welcome you." And I never forgot that. And I want to thank everyone. I've had phenomenal four years. Dr. Hand, everyone, administration have been terrific, but more importantly, or in the sense of the students, right, and the teachers and the faculty. I've had a phenomenal time, and I'm looking forward to more years. So I thank you, and the Board, of course. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Congratulations to you both, Rob Janowitz and Rocco Verulo. And we just look forward to all that you will continue to contribute to our, for our students' growth and educational welfare, as well as having fun. Okay. Next, we have the recommended adoption of several policies. I don't have the names of these policies in front of me at present that we're going to adopt, but these are policies that have been previously reviewed, and I'm sure a very detailed review. And I am sure that they are correct, not only in content, but in grammar. And grammar and content, there's no period or comma or anything missing. So I'm going to ask for the recommended adoption of those following policies. This is the second reading. We have had no comments on them. This is the second reading. They've only been corrected to perfection. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And again, these are policies that have already been itemized here with the, the exact names. Next, we don't have, we don't have to, to vote on these, but we have several policies on the agenda for their first reading. They... They.
Non-discrimination.
They include non-discrimination, sexual harassment, sexual harassment in the workplace, programs for students with disabilities, graduation. Correct.
Graduation ceremonies.
Graduation ceremonies, alcohol and drug testing, the regulations associated with alcohol and drug test, and another exhibit involving alcohol and drug testing. So that you know, we put these on the agenda so that they are reviewed. We have a policy committee that does meet, and we do, you know, look over them and make comments as appropriate. So it's all very important that our policies are correct and current for everyone's protection and knowledge, so we don't have to vote on those. So we'll take, oh, wait, a two-minute break before the presentations.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. We'll take a two-minute. Can I just also, I just wanna also echo and extend congratulations to Mr. Janowitz and Mr. Verulo, both of whom, of course, worked with during, during the course of the pandemic. Literally, Rocco came on the day that we moved into it. And right, and right from, from day one, he was right in there and trying to make sure that we were providing the best possible service that we could for our children and our school community. Mr. Janowitz, I have seen you in many different roles, and every single time, it's always about what can we do to support children and their families? And you know, the reality is, you don't always get it right. None of us do. And we're always working harder and coming back, but that's it. You guys, you continue to come back every single day, brand-new day. How can we do better? How can we do better? And that, I think, is something that's very special about White Plains. Tenure is not a one-way street. It's a mutual engagement between the Board of Education and the professional faculty. And in that mutual engagement, the commonality is that we are all working to do our very, very best for children. And again, not always easy. Not, not always easy, but always worth it. So congratulations to both of you. I know that there are probably gonna be pictures upstairs and all kinds of good stuff, too, and you really do deserve it. Congratulations. And Rocco, another month, but you're almost there.
So everyone is welcome to stay for the presentations, but we're gonna take a two-minute break if anyone wants to do a quick exit. So next, we're gonna go to our superintendent.
You wanna do public first?
Public participation? Okay. Okay. Next, we'll go to public participation. Is there any public participation? The board will entertain comments from the public on any issue with a time limit of three minutes per person and a maximum time limit of 25 minutes for public participation. Is there any public participation tonight? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go.
Superintendent Support Part Two.
Part 2.0.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you all, and thanks again for your patience in celebrating with us, with all of our colleagues as well. We do have some really great presentations for the board this evening, and teams are here tonight to present. So first, I would like to welcome the team to present the presentation. I think we're doing, yeah, building conditions first. Dr. Karateis, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Outstanding. Gentlemen? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much, everyone. My name is Bob B. I'm with H2M. I'm here with Mike Lantier, Cole Podowski, and Joseph Serrano. We are gonna be presenting to you all the five-year plan and the building condition survey. What we're gonna start off with is just basically explaining what that is, what the process was, what we looked into. We'll go into a summary of what we found, which will itemize every building. Now, we're not gonna go into the details in every building. We'll keep it high level. We'll talk about the highlights of each building, then we'll talk about next steps. So with that, I'm gonna pass it off to Mike here, and he's gonna get into what we're talking about.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, board. It's good to be here tonight, presenting on this detailed information. Like Bob mentioned, we'll try to keep it short, although we go through a lot of information. So what is the five-year plan process and what is the building condition survey? So it really starts with this, this BCS, what we call it. We bring a team of architects and engineers out, and we look through really every space, every building. This is something that's required by the State Education Department. Your year is 2023 for your field walkthroughs and then a submission in 2024. The previous building condition survey and the five-year plan that the district went through is in 2015. They typically occur about every five years, but the State Education Department kinda changed their requirements of when they would have White Plains submit, so your year is 2024. However, into the interim, we do conduct yearly AVIs, an annual visual inspection of each space. It's not quite as detailed, and we don't go into the numbers as detailed as we are right now. So this comprehensive plan, besides these site walkthroughs and the reviews of all your spaces, it's numerous discussions with building administration, district administration, facilities, athletics, and we basically break down the different components of your buildings and your sites into your interior, your exterior, your site work, and then your infrastructure, like your water systems, your HVAC systems, and your electrical systems. We then review any future needs while also comparing to your previous five-year plan or your previous building condition survey to make sure that all of the priority items were taken care of. Bob will go through what has been completed since that 2015, but what I can say is that it is, it is very impressive with the amount of work that the district and facilities has been able to get through. It was about $200 million worth of work since 2015. It's a very impressive number. And then as part of this process, it's prioritization, it's budgeting, and then determining the financial needs for construction. So I like to include this slide. You may have seen this one before, but it basically just gives a snapshot of your current facilities and the building age. Like I mentioned, the district has done a very good job of maintaining these buildings, but it's important to note that a number of your buildings are 100-plus years old. So we would anticipate to be reviewing some of these items that have really continued to meet and hit their, their expected maximum life expectancy. In the report, we break down the priorities by year. Your first-year items, which we would get done in '24 and '25, include your life safety. Priority two is '20, '25, and '26, that's your health and safety and property damage. Priority three is anything age-related or perhaps by a new code requirement. And then your priority four or five, a few years down the road, are desirable or wish-list upgrades. Overall building rating definitions, every building within district was rated satisfactory. Again, that's really based on the diligent efforts by the district to maintain the facilities. You wouldn't typically see excellent, even in new buildings, we all know, even in new construction, there can be things that bring you down to a satisfactory level. Nothing was rated unsatisfactory, and nothing within district was rated failing.
Thanks, Mike. Just as high-level, you know, since that 2015 building condition survey, we've done various roof replacements, district-wide PA systems, playgrounds, retaining walls, site work, interior renovations, including bathrooms, interior renovations for ceilings and light fixtures, upgrades, renovations to the windows, masonries, various interior upgrades at the high school, all over the district, a lot of different work. That's, that's the left-hand column there. On the right-hand column, you'll see actually stuff that's happening right now. New turf field and track at the high school, corridor ceilings, lighting upgrades at the high school, innovation lab, serving line upgrades at various elementary schools, toilet room renovations at George Washington, electrical service upgrades at various schools. Those are kind of integrated with the last line, which is the district-wide HVAC system upgrades. So all of this stuff has happened since the 2015 BCS. Now, again, those things that are on the right-hand column, those are things that are actively either in construction, up at SCD, or working on.
Can I just, really quick question? About the overall building rating definitions? So do you, are you the ones that make the determination, then, of which category the building conditions fall into, and is that based on criteria that are provided by the state?
Yes, we will make the determinations. The licensed architects and engineers who are visiting the sites will make the determination. It's based on the criteria from the state, exactly. So what this slide shows is basically a summary sheet for all of the work that we put into, I did share with the board, those spreadsheets that basically itemize all of the work that we would recommend or the work the district would like to do at the facility. So this just basically outlines that within the first year, somewhere around $50 million, then it breaks down to $13, $12, $67, and then you'll see in years '28 to '29, it's $109 million. Now, again, all of these items are broken out. You'll see that the years '24, '25 is a little bit higher than those other years, you know, the ones in between. What that includes is actually work that we're doing right now that was part of the previous bond referendum, so that, that has to be included because it hasn't been started yet. But that is included as part of this. Going individual buildings, again, I'm gonna try to keep this high level. So at Church Street, with regards to interior work, ceiling systems in select classrooms and auditoriums will be replaced, or we're recommending to be replaced. With regards to the exterior work, the exterior of the building is in satisfactory condition, nothing really there. Site work, just some highlighted areas, existing playground areas and site drainage upgrades. That doesn't necessarily mean playgrounds, but that means playing surfaces and those types of things. Water systems, really not, not much there, except for there's a couple little items. HVAC systems, replace the existing boiler plant at the, for the electrical systems, replacement of various electrical panel boards, new generator, and fire alarm system upgrades. Now, one thing that I will mention is that there are some repetitive items on here, so you're gonna see fire alarm and generator and potentially some various panel upgrades kinda spread out throughout all the streets, throughout all the schools. Maranick Avenue, interior work, we're looking at interior renovations, including refinishing of specified bathrooms. Exterior work, window replacement, and then also a prefabricated exterior bathroom over, over by the fields. Site work, drainage improvements, and then an additional playground area. HVAC systems, replacing existing boiler plant. Now, what you will notice is not included in there is the HVAC upgrades because that has already been done, or it is nearing completion on that one. Electrical systems, new generator and fire alarm upgrades. When you look at George Washington, partial basement renovations, including classrooms and corridors. Exterior work would include window replacements and some, some weatherization, so maybe that's just keeping the building watertight. Site work, restoration of some drainage, road widening, installation of new entrances and bus circulation. That one is a little bit more complicated, but we are working on, you know, dealing with some of the bus circulation issues at that site. HVAC systems, new boiler plant, electrical systems, again, new generator, fire alarm. Post-road school, nothing really in the interior and exterior. This is obviously one of the newer buildings. Site work, some repaving, some drainage, some expansion of playgrounds and striping of the, of some sports areas. HVAC systems, replacement of numerous heat pumps in select classrooms. Now, what that is, is that what the district is gonna look to do is to replace a series throughout the next five years, so it's not all hitting all at once. They'll replace five a year, say, for the next five years. Electrical systems, new fire alarm system to be installed. This building actually has a, has a generator, so there's no generator listed on this one. Ridgeway, acoustical ceiling panels, replacements, some interior classroom doors, hardware, masonry infills. We're looking to, on the exterior of the building, replace fascia, soffits in the courtyards. And then also, one of the bigger items is also potentially a new music room as part of an addition. Actually, it's more of an infill of an existing courtyard. HVAC systems, some gas detection, electrical systems, new generator and fire alarm. At Rochambeau, what I wanna say about this one is actually Rochambeau is actually in design right now based on the previous bond. So that was part of that big-ticket item why you saw in that first year there was a little bit more money in there. Including flooring repairs, ceiling replacement and door replacement in the classrooms, new cafeteria and kitchen, window replacements on the exterior, HVAC systems is boiler plant replacement and unit ventilator replacement. Then also in the, for the electrical, new generator, existing fire alarm to be upgraded. At Highlands, interior work, removal of existing ceiling systems, replacement, upgrade of casework in the classrooms and auditorium seating. The exterior work is including window replacement and weatherization, site work, roadway, parking lot resurfacing, fixing up some of the, some of the roadways, basically. HVAC systems, a boiler replacement, and then electrical systems, this one is a new generator. This one happens to have a new fire alarm. White Plains High School, renovations of the music room classrooms and corridor, and corridors in the D-Wing, pool upgrades, interior renovations in the, in the associated locker rooms and bathrooms. Site work, I'm sorry, actually, exterior was window replacement, site work, existing drainage improvements, new turf fields, including softball and baseball. HVAC systems, recommendations include new gas detection systems and A-Wing boiler plant replacement. Electrical systems, it's the same old thing, existing fire alarm upgrades, and new generators on this one, not singular, that would be plural for that. Ed House, which is where we're at right now, interior renovation, interior work would be door and hardware replacement, exterior work would be window replacement and roof replacement, electrical systems is new fire alarms, new generator on that building. Eastview Middle School, interior work would include door replacements in classrooms, exterior work is window replacement, site work is asphalt paving, existing roadways and parking lots. HVAC systems is new gas detection system, electrical systems are new generators, upgrades existing to the, to the fire alarm system. And then the Field House, exterior work, I'm sorry, interior work to renovate the non-compliant bathrooms and locker rooms. Exterior work is exterior doors and some garage doors recommended to be replaced, and then electrical systems is the new fire alarm system. Before I move on to, to kind of, you know, what the next steps are, I just wanna be very clear that when we put this all together, we're using rough numbers for budgeting purposes on this, as per the state requirements. We do have some contingencies in there, and obviously, this is, this is a roadmap for the district on how and what we need to be doing over the next five years. What, you know, what, what Mike was saying earlier about part of the plan and part of the process of reviewing the previous one, not all the items from the previous BCS got completed. We, potentially, the district did different items instead of those items. You know, needs change over five years and such. So again, this is just a general roadmap. The things that are life and safety, obviously, we're gonna address immediately, and they may not even, it may be something the facility's gonna handle right away. So those are the types of things that we're gonna be doing.
And these are recommendations?
Correct.
From you, as opposed to somehow, again, the health and safety is one thing, but everything else is really recommendations?
Yeah, and again, you know, like Mike said, there's, there's, we work, so H2M is doing this with the architects and engineers, but then we work with the district, with facilities, with the custodians to see what they're also seeing. You know, we work really hand-in-hand with you all to figure out what it is that you guys need and how and when we're, when we're gonna do that. So again, with that, I'm gonna pass it back over to Mike, and he'll talk about next steps.
Thank you. So the next step is to formally submit this information as required by the state, and then over the next year, as well as through the final of the five-year plan, it's prioritization of the projects. It's an ongoing process where we meet with facilities, education, and athletics, and then we identify the funding sources, which would be capital funding and operational, your operational budget. And then we finalize the scope based upon the priorities and the available budget, and then we communicate these needs out to the public, and we would then formally have a public authorization for the fund appropriation.
And when you, when you all look at the, the spreadsheets that identify what years and such, and there are some highlighted numbers, we did break it out, you know, based on funding sources, and the only thing that's listed under bonds are the projects that are currently bonded right now. But everything else is in there, you know, for, for capital and such.
So Bob, I just wanna, just wanna add to what you were saying, that this, you know, the district always engages in long-range planning, and so this is our updated long-range infrastructure plan, and we'll draw upon this information in order to establish any future capital project work. One of the things that you'll see in this plan is that we've, we've broken it out, so what can be done operationally within our existing budgets, and then what are those bigger items that have to be considered for future capital projects? But we gotta get through what we're doing right now before we get to this next step. Thank you.
And I just wanna ask, we, we, the finance committee had heard this, and we had the opportunity to ask lots of questions and then hear more detailed information, but sitting in this building that was built in 1916, it's wild to me that previous boards, previous superintendents, previous community members have really focused and prioritized, like, our buildings in this, in this city. And as a teacher who's taught in buildings that have, were falling down and classrooms that were unsafe, it's amazing that you can't do your job as a teacher if it's not safe, it's not clean, it's not welcoming. So I really do appreciate just the vision here and bringing, I know we have to do it as part of our state, but you went through everything you went through with our staff and custodian, just the eye to the detail, and I appreciate that because oftentimes, we're not in every building, so I do appreciate it. So thank you for the vision.
And the other thing to what Kane is saying, just the attention to the design of the buildings and making sure that replacements reflect the period of the building is really, you know, it's important, it's character, it's legacy, it's our, it's our community. So, you know, I also, in addition to what Kane is saying, I also appreciate that, that type of attention to detail. And I would say, you know, for the public, this, this five-year plan is a serious plan to make sure the buildings that we have, our staff and students in, are safe. They are ADA compliant, and they're as safe as they can be, but they're as functional as they can be so that we can get what we need for our work and for our work with kids.
And the community is very supportive of all of our efforts to keep our facilities And the community is very supportive of all of our efforts to keep our facilities in top-notch condition, and there is, you know, every time I, I'm in buildings with the public or with families, there's always commentary about how beautiful everything looks and what good shape it's in.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, everybody. Fantastic.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Construction update. As well, right?
Yes. We'll have a brief update by Friday.
Evening, guys.
Evening, everybody. Our, Chris Pearson with Triton here, colleagues Teddy and Fred here. And, you know, we do our, our full board update for you all next month, but there was something really important that we wanted to get out in front of you all before that, okay? And it has to do with SED approval timeframe, okay? And historically, up through last year, you know, depending on the size of the project, SED was taking about three to four months to approve a project so that we could get ready for it to, you know, get prepared to go out for bid. That, since the beginning of this year, that timeframe seems to have jumped to six to seven months, okay? And this is, this is statewide, is our understanding. And it seems to be, SED seems to be overrun with requests for approvals and then not sending any of these drawings out for third-party inspection. So, so I think it's the same amount of stuff, and I don't know everything about it, but it seems to be the same amount of stuff that's just doing a lot more work and taking longer to do that. And so, again, what we wanted to let you know was, we've got four projects up at SED right now, submitted beginning of February. It's the three library rentals, that's Church Street, Marinerick and Ridgeway, along with gym ventilator at project at George Washington, and kitchen upgrades, kitchen cafeteria upgrades at Church and GW. If this six to seven-month lead time holds, we won't get approval on those four jobs until August, let's say. We're, we're trying to be creative to see what we can do in terms of still bidding and doing some of this work, but it's much harder not having the summer window to take advantage of. So, and also for the new addition, what, you were forecasting a submission to the state in April, and towards that end, we would see that approval around November or so. Hopefully, hopefully, SED's hearing that, you know, that this isn't making a lot of school districts happy, maybe they'll institute a third-party review. Again, maybe that would speed up, but as, as we understand it right now, these dates seem to be the current trend. As a reaction to that, for all the scope and projects that were trending towards the summer '25, H2M is trying to ram that through much faster to get that up. And, and just in light of the current SED timeframe. So, again, our full, you were told to keep this succinct, just really wanted to get it to you, it's kind of new information, wanted to make sure you guys had it, didn't want to wait until March to let you all know, and.
Dr. Rick, if you speak to that, because I know at the legislative forum, it came up, legislators were talking about that.
Oh, okay.
That every district is getting backed up with lots of construction jobs, and I know that they've been advocating for that third-party reviewer to speed it up and to shrink that timeframe, and do you have any?
Yeah, well, absolutely, and thank you again, shared, shared this with, with the Board of Education when you let us know. We're, we're continuing to advocate for, and it doesn't, listen, if it's a third-party reviewer, great, however, however it needs to get done, the projects that are in the hopper statewide, having them languish in review creates all types of downstream challenges for communities, especially, you know, bonding situations, cost change, and then the market, you know, in terms of the demand changes, and, and so we need to help to advocate for an efficient and an effective review process so that these projects can get done. And I know, I know there is an additional strain on the review process because of the resources associated with the American Rescue Plan and, and some of those types of projects, infrastructure projects that may be going on, but, you know, however it shakes out, we need to figure out a way to do it, because six, seven months in review is, you, you could, you could never expect that would happen anywhere except government.
Right.
Right? And, and so, you know, thankfully for, for our legislative delegation to hear us and, and they're, they're helping to deliver that message, so maybe we'll be able to see some change.
Let us know what we can.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Letty.
Thank you.
As a, as a quick update, and I'll let Dr. Karatash do this because I, it's really good news, fiscal stress. I know, I know there is stress, but. Curricular stress.
So really simply, the state comptroller every year does a, a review of the finances of all school districts, all governments, actually. It's not just for school districts, it's, it's, you know, towns, villages, counties, to just see if schools are having some financial indicators that might indicate that they're susceptible to stress, as well as environmental indicators. There's four categories of, of what is considered that you could fall into, it could be significant stress, it could be moderate, susceptible, or no designation. I'm happy to say both for the fiscal indicators, as well as the environmental indicators, that we have no designation, and that has been the case now, all the years that I've been here, that I've been reviewing this. So the district is in good financial shape. Our rating was, quite honestly, it was zero for all the fiscal indicators for the past three years, and we have 15 points for environmental, but that just has to do with, you know, just the economic, the environment of our community, so.
We have no control.
No control over that. So we're in good shape.
Thank you, Dr. Karatash. I do also want to, in, in advance of, of Dr. Hand's presentation, I, I'd like to thank Dr. Hand, as, as well as Ms. Al Garten and the team, everybody who helped to bring together tonight's presentation on the instructional component of the proposed budget. Now, as the board knows, tons of information involved, but Dr. Hand's presentation is, is really, try to, tries to pull it all together and frame it. All of, all that information will be presented or will be put on the district's website and all about the budget, and there, there will be more conversation to come. And I also want to call it, or to draw attention to how the language you're going to see throughout this presentation is talking about all children. So, so when we're talking about what, what can we do to expand and, and what can we do to improve, we're talking about what can we do to improve and expand for 7,000 unique children. And, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, one of the things that I learned personally during the time of the pandemic was that truly, every single family and every single child's experience is unique. There are commonalities, to be sure, but when it comes down to it, we're talking about creating an educational experience for unique humans, and what we seek to do is to be able to do that here in the White Plains City School District in a manner that's both, both efficient, effective and engaging. So, Dr. Hand, 27 slides.
I'm just stuck on significant stress, because I think that that's like, I think that's what I'd be monitored and evaluated on. So I just want to thank, I'm only joking, I want to thank the trustees of the Board of Education and Dr. Rika for allowing me to present this evening the plans that we have for next year. And we're going to start at the beginning, we're going to start with pre-kindergarten programs, but don't worry, we'll try to, we'll try to make this quick. It's 8:39, Mr. Pepper, so you can time me if you need to. All right, so our pre-K program, we have a robust pre-K program with 327 students in 22 classrooms. For next year, we'll continue to focus our efforts on consistency of the program across providers and across the classrooms. That includes curriculum resources, library book collections that are curated for each thematic unit that's being studied by our students, and supplies and materials that allow our younger students to discover, explore and apply in classroom learning centers what they are learning about in the eight thematic units of study. We will also be providing a professional learning on our curriculum, professional learning on our curricular resources, pre-K On My Way, Wilson Foundations and Hegarty Phonics, awareness, phonetic awareness, as well as establishing routines for student success. And I, I usually point out, too, the curricular resources that we use in pre-K, we also use in our early childhood program, K1 and 2 in our elementary schools, so there's continuity of learning from pre-K through elementary school. For literacy K through 6, in literacy, we continue to develop and refine our program with research-based practices in alignment with the science of reading. We will be convening a committee of teachers, administrators, parents and students, I would like to have elementary, middle and high school students on the committee, to explore the potential adoption of a knowledge-based core curriculum resource. We want literacy to support the development of content knowledge in science and social studies. There needs to be a balance of narrative and expository text, and most importantly, alignment with grade level standards and content studied for the grade level. In addition, we will be providing professional development for K to 2 teachers for the 24-25 school year on the writing revolution, which is a method that teachers, that teachers can use to advance the expository writing skills of students. We also plan to continue work that Deb Al Garten started with the core learning, reading support for our teachers. Dr. Barpolis and I will be working with the principals to develop a plan that will work for each school so that teachers will eventually have the opportunity to work with a core consultant to strengthen practice in Tier 1 and ensure that all students experience a rigorous, relevant and inclusive education. And we will also continue to use assessments to track student achievement and progress as they move through grade level, they move through a grade level and up through the grade levels. And a couple of times during the presentation this evening, you're going to be hearing about NWEA assessment, and that's something that we newly adopted this year. In dual language, we have been phasing in the adoption of the R Core units, and in 2024, 2025, we will be rolling the units into grades 4 and 5. That will complete the rollout, it will be K through 5 at that point, and we will be providing ongoing coaching for the units with the support of the American Reading Company consultants and our tool, and our two in-district dual-language instructional coaches. In addition, we will continue to target professional learning opportunities through colleges and universities, the Center for Applied Linguistics, the Hudson Valley Regional Bilingual Education Resource Network, which we usually call the R-Burn, and noteworthy experts in the field of dual-language learning and best practices for language acquisition. In English Language Arts, in 6th grade to 12th grade, we are continuing with the implementation of the workshop model, and will be providing professional learning for teachers in small group instruction and conferencing, focusing on literacy, meaning reading, writing, speaking and listening across all disciplines, presentations in classrooms, presentations in our content area classrooms, and social studies and science, writing and reading and social studies and science that are building literacy skills. We started to use the NWEA assessment this year in place of the older reading math, reading and math inventory assessments. So we haven't added something on, we've all, we've actually abandoned something and replaced it with something that's now continuous through the grade levels K through 12, that will eventually be K through 12 next year. It will be important to provide professional learning opportunities to our teachers on how to use the data from these assessments to inform instruction at the whole class, small group and individual student level. Finally, we are expanding partnerships with local and regional organizations, just to, you know, you'll see that throughout the presentation, too, expanding these partnerships so that we really can have our children apply the learning that they, that's happening in the classroom to what's happening out in the field, what's happening out in research, what's happening out in colleges and universities, what's happening out in cultural organizations. A new course being offered at Rochambeau for next year will be a dual enrollment course in partnership with the Westchester Community College. Students would have the opportunity to earn three college credits while still in high school. This course is already being offered at White Plains High School, and it is great that we are bringing this opportunity to our high school students. So it's an integration of a college readiness, a transition to college and the English 101, which is writing and research, and if you finish both of those components and all the required coursework that goes along with that, you're eligible for the three credits through Westchester Community College. English as a New Language, K through 12. For ENL, we have been focusing on fostering strong co-teaching partnerships and will continue that work into next year. There will also be learning opportunities to support the administration of the NICATL, which is the test that, that students take to see if they are eligible for mandated services through the ENL department, as well as the L intake process. We have an ongoing partnership with Clarkson University to offer interested teachers and administrators a pathway toward ENL and T-SOL certification, and this is through the All for L's program, and Clarkson University will also be providing coaching for ENL co-teaching partnerships next year. At the high school, we will be using the Lost Links Assessment to monitor language proficiency, and we will work to increase our presence at the Manhattan, the Manhattanville Changing Suburbs Institute, and we want to focus on developing more extended-day opportunities for our language learners. A new course in Explorations in Literacy and Language. This course at the high school will be for, targeted towards transitioning and expanding L's, that's their language proficiency based on the NICATL exam that they take through New York State. And we, the, the purpose of this course is to strengthen the academic content vocabulary needed to achieve success in science and social studies classes as the students transition into English-speaking classes from their bilingual classes. So it's really to strengthening, strengthen their, their pre-teaching and their preparation for success, and then it will also create that pathway. We're going to be talking a little bit later about a pathway in social studies for them, too. Mathematics, K through 5. In mathematics, K through 5, we will be renewing the Envision Math three-year license for grades 3 through 5, and we have staggered that so that we are paying for the K through 2 licenses, not in the same year as we're paying the 3 through 5 licenses, and that allows me to keep that within our district-level textbook budget. Not that we wouldn't do that anyway, it's not a matter of not having the money, but if you stagger the licenses, then you can spread out the good wealth. We will be continuing to administer the NWE, the NWEA MAP assessment to carefully track and monitor student achievement and growth, just as in ELA, we will provide professional learning for the teachers on using the data to inform instruction at the classroom, small group and individual student levels, and we will continue to plan and refine extended-day and summer programs that meet the needs of our students and partner with families through in-person workshops and shared digital resources. In mathematics, grades 6 through 12, we will be using the NWEA MAP assessment, growth assessment, so that it is a continuum from kindergarten through high school, which is something that we've never had before. We've had kind of like a, a mix of different types of assessments, but now we actually can follow children straight through elementary into middle school, into high school as they move up in English, ELA and in mathematics. Al Laporte is working with the teachers for the upper-level math classes to see if there's an assessment that can assist with tracking students' understanding and mastery of concepts in these higher-level classes so that the teachers can then personalize support for students, you know, ensuring that they are prepared to take these advanced placement classes, advanced placement assessments. We will continue with the Algebra I Regions Prep Academy and the Middle School Math Skills Prep Academy, as well as look closely at Tier 1 core instruction, particularly at the middle school level next year, and support our teachers in developing appropriate scaffolds so that all students have entry points needed for success. STEM, K through 5. In STEM, K through 5, we are continuing with the Project Lead the Way Launch Program and boot-up lessons from the Amazon Future Engineers Program that many teachers have been participating in over multiple cohorts. We now have a STEM specialist in each elementary school building that supports the K through 5 engineering and computer science pathway, the New York State Science Learning Standards and the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards. We are continuing our participation in the Mercy University STEM Ambassador's Program, and we will be exploring the possibility of establishing a Lego LEAVE robotics team at the elementary level, and I added that yes with the exclamation point, I'm really excited about that. There goes your weekends, right, Rocco? No more, no more weekends. For Science and Engineering, K through 5, we are continuing the phase-in of the Science 21 curriculum, and will be rolling out to grades K and 1 in 2024, 2025. Thank you, Dr. Barpolis, and it is amazing to think that next year, we will have a strong science curriculum all the way from kindergarten through 5th grade. So we're really excited about that. This will be supported by professional learning offered through Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's and through lesson-study opportunities offered through the district. The Science 21 program is in alignment with the New York The Science 21 program is in alignment with the New York State Science Learning Standards, and as you can see by the photos, the science curriculum promotes inquiry-based and hands-on learning about science concepts and how to think like a scientist and ask questions about what you're learning to enhance your thinking like a scientist. We will be purchasing supplies and materials to support the four required investigations in grades three through five. As you know, this year will be the first year of the administration of the Grade Five New York State Science Assessment, and the investigations are part of the process to prepare the students to engage in the science content. They aren't necessarily a standardized assessment. They're actually kind of like labs, hands-on experiments that they want all children in New York State to be exposed to. We obviously expose the children to much more than just four required investigations. We will also be searching for partnerships that the students can connect with when they are learning in the classroom to make those connections to authentic, real-world applications in the field and in research. For Science and Engineering, six through 12, Science and Engineering, six through 12, has been focusing on the New York State Science Learning Standards for a few years now and making shifts to curriculum, teaching practices, and assessments in preparation for the new Regents exams. In June 2025, there will be the first administration of the New York State Intermediate Level Science Assessment in grade eight. As we are still administering the Earth Science Regents to our grade eight students this year, that will not kick in for us until next year, the 2024-2025 school year. And there will be a Regents Life Science Biology exam, formerly known as Living Environment, administered to our high school students for the first time in June 2025. In June 2026, the three Physical Science Regents will be updated to be in alignment with the New York State Science Learning Standards, and that would be Chemistry, Physics, and Earth Science. We will continue to support our teachers with the professional learning opportunities and coaching to meet the demands of the new standards, and based on student interest, we plan to run a Project Lead the Way Environmental Engineering class for the first time in the year 2024-2025. We proposed that class last year, but now with the course fare that we've had at the high school, we really think that we're going to have the student interest to run the course the coming year. Social Studies, six to 12. Don't ask me why there's a Ferris wheel here, but I guess because social studies just keeps on going on and on and on, right? It's just like everything's... So we've had new textbook adoptions for dual-language sixth-grade social studies, AP History, AP US History, and AP Psychology. These were purchased with existing funds in the district-level textbook code, so we're prepared to implement that for next year. Exam prep books for US History and AP World History are also the updated versions to match the updated tests that we have. We will continue to partner with CAST to provide professional learning on utilizing the Universal Design for Learning Framework for lesson planning. Another exciting addition this year was the Harrow Investment Simulator, which we mini-piloted, and it was so well-received that we will be implementing it across all economics classes in the 2024-2025 school year. It is a simulation where students receive a certain amount of money to start with, and they need to invest it in over a set period of time to see who can make their money grow the most through their financial portfolio of selected investments. It's not real money. So if anybody remembers like the stock market game, it's a little bit like the stock market game, but it's more like the vastness of investments. Not real money, though. But I would have to say, the students that really excel in that, I might want to consult with them a little bit. Social Studies, continued. We will continue partnering with and inviting guest speakers in to engage with our students and to expand trips and partnerships to enhance learning. And this is a new course, ENL Civics and Economics. It's a new ENL course that will be titled Civics and Economics, and it will be a full-year course for entering and emerging Ls and CIF students. CIF students are students with interrupted formal education. It will fulfill the New York State requirements for government economics, and it will begin to prepare our students for the US History Regents. So the next courses in this sequence would be, this would be the first course, then they would move on to US History, and then they would move on to the sequence of two years for Global History. That's the typical sequence. For World Languages, in the World Languages Department, there will be a focus on the recently adopted New York State World Language Standards. Other curriculum work will include aligning the Spanish Language Arts Curriculum to the Next Generation Literacy Standards and ELA. In addition, we will be implementing a New York State Education Four Plus One Pathway using an approved assessment for world languages. We are purchasing the Checkpoint A and Checkpoint B exams. We will continue to support students on their quest for earning the Seal of Bili literacy at graduation, and there will also be a committee to adopt new resources in Italian and French. World Languages and English as a New Language and Dual Language. We want all eligible students to take advantage of the opportunity to earn the Seal of Bili literacy at graduation, and we want to expand the languages as well. We don't teach all the languages, but we do have students that have home languages that we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to earn this credential on their diploma with their home language. Our current number of applicants this year is 118 strong, and we look forward to expanding this number in the 2023-2024 school year.
And you said this during curriculum, but that Seal of Bili literacy, so you do not have to take the course in school, right? You can have a home language that you're fluent in, in reading and writing and...
Right, you have to, there are points to get both of these seals. So you have to gain your points, but then you can do your presentations in your home language for it.
So the points aren't based on exam, it's on the presentations, correct?
You can have points based on exam, it's based on presentation, they're based on projects. There are different things that you can do to earn those points. So we've had children earn the seal in at least two languages, in their home language and then also the language that they're learning at school. For Fine Arts, K through 12, we're continuing with the On Broadway for our fifth graders. The Super Art and Craft of Animation class will continue into its second year, and we will continue to grow that class, as well as the Music and Technology Class at White Plains High School, and purchasing of supplies and materials, and making sure that our instruments are in good repair, and then to use technology to enhance the learning experience of our students in all of the arts. And I know that Gary West is also very interested in starting a dance program, but we have that in the long-range plan. Just a plug, just a plug for the dance program. Next is Wellness, Physical Education, and Health, K through 12. There is a multi-year plan for updating the fitness rooms at Highlands, Rochambeau, and Eastview. We are requesting a little extra money in the budget for that. I believe it's $10,000 per school. We are purchasing new health textbooks. We are continuing to develop curriculum maps. I have to thank Chris Trias for the work that he's doing in this area with his department. And for each grade level, K through eight, developing curriculum maps, as well as courses in nine through 12, expanding the knowledge and implementation of physical activity, health, nutrition, and wellness through the school day, beyond physical education formal classes and health education classes. So really doing, you know, movement minutes and getting children active during the day, during recess, and at other times during the day, just so that health is built into our curriculum. And then continue to advance the use of technologies in physical education and health classes and the application of the concepts to experiences outside of the school. Our Avid program will continue to grow our students' awareness of college readiness by developing executive functioning skills, including goal-setting, organization skills, and planning for success, and partnering with the Guidance Department to increase college exposure for all students. And we are working towards Highlands being a demonstration site also for the Avid program. Now Instructional Technology, Business, and Library Media Services, K through 12, this is Rocco Verulo's department, and under his leadership, we are continuing to provide professional learning in the integration of learning technologies to advance both teaching and learning, and continue to further develop our partnerships with Bosse's, The Lyric, Uncharted Learning, and other vendors that we work with, build internal capacity with our computer lead teachers, trainers, our teacher experts, and our computer TAs, and provide flexible learning support to our teachers. That's really what they're asking for, you know? It's hard for everybody to sit in the same room at the same time and do the same exact thing, but our teachers really want the flexibility of having technology support them in their professional learning, so we'll be using that, and then also evaluating the use and the effectiveness of student learning applications that we have. Here, we're continuing to support our students in developing the skills that they need for digital citizenship. We want our students to really develop those strong sense of what it is, what's your digital footprint, how do you use technology as a tool, how do you make sure that you are safe, how do you make sure that you're keeping others safe with the use of technology? And then, working on innovation labs at White Plains High School and Highlands to support digital fabrication, the expansion of the Incubator EDU program, which is kind of like that Shark Tank incubator program where children start to develop, where students start to develop their own companies through their innovative ideas of what they can do. We want to expand that to a second section next year. We want to explore the possibility of that first LEGO League Robotics Team at the elementary school, which I already mentioned, and expand the addition, and explore the addition of a Cisco Network and Cybersecurity Academy at the high school. Another thing that's very exciting.
And that's such a good prep, that cyber security, it's in demand, it's more than a thing, it's here to stay.
No shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, yeah. The need is becoming even more urgent, I would say. Yeah.
You need to find enough security engineers right now.
So another new course, this is a new business elective course offered, it's Uncharted Learning's Accelerator EDU, and the Accelerator EDU is actually, it models a real-life startup accelerator, and you launch, the students would launch and gain traction for their businesses. So they start to get into, it's an extension of that Incubator EDU class, they start to get into the legal entity of having a business, launching a company, what it means to get people behind you when you're starting a company, transitioning your businesses that you developed from the Incubator EDU program in that class into sustainable, functioning ventures. So we need a point-two teacher, you know I love this. This is like my thing. So we need a point-two teacher for this. I was taking pictures, I was sending them to my son, I was like, look at what we're doing, you would love being in high school right now. So we need a point-two teacher to do this. We are actually going to see if we have enough students this year out of the Incubator EDU to go into this class. If we don't do it this year, meaning next year, we will be doing it the following year because then we're adding the second section of the Incubator class, and then we'll have more students who will be ready and have the prerequisite to go into the Accelerator EDU. But I think that, you know, it's really exciting to know that we're going to move this forward and really build in that skill set. This is a class that students learn so much in, business, finance, presentation skills, literacy skills, research skills. This is really true integration of subject areas, and could be very meaningful and profitable. Computer Science Pathways, K through 12. Work on coordinating all of our efforts. So you've heard a lot about computer science and digital fluency and things that are happening at all the different levels, Project Lead the Way Launch at the elementary level, we have computer classes at the middle school level, we have computer classes at the high school level, we have AP Comp Sci at the high school level. So really trying to bring this all together with our librarians and our specialists and, you know, our enrichment teachers, the Amazon Future Engineers, the Mercy University STEM Ambassadors, all these programs, all the tech programs that we have, bringing it together and truly aligning that with the Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards, and really making this K through 12 continuum. And also, People's Services, People's Supports and Services, sorry about that. In terms of programs and services, continued support with instructional coaches to strengthen specially-designed instruction, the addition of a K through two class with one teacher and two teaching assistants, this will be budget-neutral, continued partnerships with consultants to support classroom instruction and structure. We will be conducting a special education audit, participation from all stakeholders to assess the district's alignment in both regulations and best practices. And for People's Services, we will continue our partnership with Andrus and the community building and restorative circles work that all of our school buildings and our principals and our teachers do, thanks to Deb Algardin, and MTSS for social emotional supports and the use of a mental health screener. Deb, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I have a question.
Okay. Well, questions go to Deb Algardin. So, not too bad.
Great job.
Not too bad. Okay, do you have any questions?
I'll just make a comment. Dr. Ricka earlier, you know, when he was talking about tenure and our newly-tenured administrators and that, the focus on improvement, right? This is all about doing things better. We are continuing to expand opportunities for our students, and every year I say this. I mean, year after year after year, we are always being really thoughtful and intentional about what we are offering to our students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you to everybody, and thank you to the team, because this is a lot of work from everybody in the organization, all of our curriculum coordinators and directors, and everybody, and Deb, and the cabinet, and Dr. Ricka, I just want to thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
And thank you, Dr. Hand. And I mean, you know, I looked around and I saw a lot of smiles, because as you're going through this presentation, you can't help but smile, especially if you went to a different school district where you didn't have those types of opportunities, or if you worked and served in a different school district where you didn't have those types of opportunities. I mean, you know, to your point, Dr. Brady, it really is, it is, for us, the question is not just, you know, what can we keep doing, or, oh, we're pretty good at this, let's do this. It's how can we continue to expand and offer more to engage our children and to really be able to set them on a path that they're going to be able to... It's our mission to achieve their dreams. You know, and I have to say, it's always great to see former students in the audience who are now becoming, you know, those, those inspirational forces in our kids' lives, because you can't do any of it without student-focused, engaged professionals in every single classroom. You know, we talk about this all the time, those of us who are serving in these roles that we're here tonight, we're just serving in these roles. We are teachers, and it takes a community of teachers to be able to offer programming like this, from everything, from the idea, the design, the inception, and then the continuous improvement that's required. But it also takes the creativity and the vision. And so I want to thank the board, as well as the Curriculum Instruction Committee. There's a lot of background work goes into this, bringing us to this moment. So thank you, everybody, really appreciate it. Thanks, Dr. Hand.
Thank you, Dr. Hand, as well. And just to add, it's so difficult, because I see...
Not difficult, I see, you know, I see things like cybersecurity, and, you know, when I look on the postings at, you know, at my job, you have cybersecurity positions opening. So the thing is, and the difficult thing is, to stay out ahead of how we think the world is shaping professionally, and then to step back and say, okay, so how can I prepare for this type of position? And then even positions that you're not 100% sure that are going to exist in the future. So it's not easy work, so thank you. We all appreciate the hard work. Okay, does that include the report?
That concludes my report. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so we're almost, we're almost done. We're going to move on to board discussion, and just to go over, you know, what we discussed in our meetings, and I'm sure, like for finance, a lot of what you saw today in terms of the business plan for maintaining our school buildings and the monies being spent, our long-range plan, all those things are what we discuss in our finance committee, and those were all things that were presented to you tonight. We always meet in HR, but as you know, those meetings are confidential meetings, but, you know, for the sake of transparency...
you know, for the sake of transparency, we want you to know that we do meet every, you know, every month. I can add that I was able to attend the Youth Bureau, um, meeting and just give an update on, on what we're doing and where we're going, and now, you know, we're in our budget season, we're looking at everything we do and how we can do it better for our students and staff. So for you, curriculum?
Curriculum, we just heard the...
Again, no more questions. Now I'm good, this, three times in a row.
Yeah, Charlie or Rose, subcommittee special?
No, we didn't meet this one.
I'll mention a couple of things, uh, just quickly, um, so you should have received from Southern Westchester BOSIs today a newsletter, which is a brand-new publication, um, sort of board-to-board, and, and we are meeting on Valentine's Day, so, oh, well. But I also wanted to mention that, assuming there's no horrible snowstorm, um, the Southern Westchester BOSIs administrators are supposed to come to our board meeting, I believe, in March.
Oh, I believe so, yes, March.
Yes, and, so...
There won't be a snowstorm, we'll be done, it'll be spring.
Okay, and, you know, so they'll, they'll come and present, um, really the benefits that school districts reap, uh, from Southern Westchester BOSIs, you know, um, including special education, we know we send students to their programs, um, CTE, we send lots of students to CTE, um, we do purchasing through Southern Westchester BOSIs, The RIC, you know, so, um, there's, there's section one, there's lots of good stuff that they'll be talking about. Um, and then the last thing, which I think maybe Rosemarie will appreciate, um, the New York State School Boards Association, we had a virtual meeting in between our Albany meetings, and, um, there is a task force now to look at, at the annual business meeting so that it doesn't last for, you know...
You don't want me to come?
Eight hours, right, so, yes, the last meeting was, yes, so the task force has been established, and they are going to look into how those meetings can be streamlined.
Yeah, they should ask my opinion if they really want to know, and I can tell them in a succinct...
They've heard, they've heard it all, including from me, on behalf of, yes.
Yeah, alrighty, alrighty, I thank you, I think. And the last two subjects on our, um, agenda, our district, the minutes of our District Wide Safety Team meeting, um, I'm not sure, I think, I don't know who attends that one, I think maybe, um, I don't know, Jim maybe, and he's not here. And the Wellness Committee meeting, I did miss due to a conflicting, um, meeting, but I will say that, you know, I know I'm committed to, to wellness, I'm committed to, you know, the people that teach wellness, you know, within our district, I think it's very important that everyone, regardless of what position they hold, um, that it is a position and an opportunity to educate our students. So in wellness, when I saw this, and I was like, I'm going to miss the, this meeting, and I missed, you know, a HR meeting, you know, I really want to talk about, you know, just our staff, you know, in our, you know, serving lunch, preparing lunch, but the forward-facing people with the kids really, you know, look for opportunities to educate our students on wellness and the importance of, of what they eat, you know, and the exercise and all that, so that's something that I've been thinking about, and I do plan on being at the next, um, meeting, and I appreciate them in the middle of the day, because I can do them via Zoom at work, and that's very helpful. But, um, I appreciate the committee, I look forward to it, and my ideas, and thank you for being so receptive.
And these are just more examples, too, of the emphasis on continued improvement, you know, um, when I listen to the recordings, you know, we're always thinking ahead, what can we do better, what do we need to do more of, um, so it, that, that really is the philosophy of the school district.
Yeah, and the board, because we're going to look for opportunities in our roles and subcommittees to be, you know, of even more service than any other way that we can for our students and staff, so thank you for that opportunity, for me, I appreciate it, you know I love it, so. And if there are no further comments, any further comments, I would like to thank John Shepherd and John Misavish, um, just for always being there and getting our, uh, meeting out to people who can't make it and just really make it an inclusive process. I will now forever remember that if anyone stands to speak from the audience, they will be directed to the podium, because I am interfering with you being able to share every word of this meeting, but in all seriousness, we do appreciate your dedication to what you do and what we need you to do. And without any further ado, safe travels, everyone, and may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Snider.
Aye, travel safely, and thank you, everyone, congratulations.
Enjoy your snow day.
Yeah, I know, enjoy your snow day.